I'm starting to record FYI. All right, well, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:04. Good to see everyone. I don't think there's anyone here from the public, so. Is there anyone from the public that would like to say anything that's not on the agenda? Oh, no. Okay, next. Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes from January 5?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion to approve the minutes?
So move. Tom, we can, okay, yeah, because we can hear you. Now, now we can hear you. Yeah, I make a motion, Tom, make a second.
Okay, so Helen. I'll just do a real call, just say aye if you for the minutes. Helen.
Hi.
Kay.
Aye.
Aye.
Omar.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Natalie.
Aye.
Okay, so minutes have been approved. Two ones to take minutes tonight. Okay, well, thanks, Kay.
Sure.
I guess right before we get started, let's just all introduce ourselves because we've got a new guest here with us today. Officer Mitch Ziki, how do, Ziki, is that how you pronounce it?
Ziki.
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 Ziki, okay, cool. All right, so hi, I'm Lindsay Rothschild, I'm on the city council and I am chairing this committee.
Great.
Hi, I'm Helen Gorchak. I am a community member and I have three kids that I'm raising with my husband.
I'm Sam Sharon, I'm a member of the community as well. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Kate Collins. I lived in East Hampton for just about 10 years. I live with my wife Max and our rescue dog and our rescue cat.
Great.
Well, I'm Tom Peak, I'm one of the city councillors. Yeah.
Great, it's very nice to meet you all.
Natalie, did you?
Yes, I was gonna say hi, I'm Natalie Gomez, I'm also an East Hampton resident and thank you for coming.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
And I'm Omar Gomez, city councillor too.
Yes, hello.
Well, so I don't, in terms of how I was thinking around the meetings, I wanted to feel very casual, it's sometimes it's hard with Zoom, but let's just, you know, try to, I don't want to feel like I have to call on everybody, but if it just, we need to, just because it gets Zoom crazy, but we should just be able to have conversations. I wanted to let you guys know that I contacted, I reached out to John Thorpe, he's the Chair of the Ordnance Review Committee in Northampton, to kind of get information about their process and how that's. And there, it was interesting because their process is under the supervision of their city solicitor, which I guess their city solicitor is on salary maybe, so they can afford to do that. But they said it, he said he couldn't believe that ours wasn't, he said it's been very helpful. What? He wants dessert, yeah, go give. Okay, he wants cotton candy. So, but he said it was very helpful just because it's easy to go down rabbit holes and like the city solicitor sometimes is like, no, that's like not even legal, or it is, but I think we've had, Sam, so we'll be calling on like your legal expertise and Mitch, your expertise with the city and laws and ordinances. So, and then we can also always, I guess, you know, if we have a question, we can always send it to the city solicitor, so. That's one thing that they're doing different. Another thing he brought up was that, and I think this is a good idea, if you guys agree, I was gonna send a letter to all the department heads, which he did, asking them to review the section of the ordinances that pertains to them, to see if they have any house cleaning issues. So the planning department, and then if they have some issues, they want to talk to us about the ordinances, we can invite them to come to our meeting and talk to us. So they've been having different department heads come, that's been helping. So they, he said basically, they start discussing ordinances based on feedback from department heads or things that come up from the community members that attend and have ideas from their own review. So, you know, those are different areas we should be looking at. He said in terms of what they've really been zoning in, zoning in on is zoning, housing and fines in terms of equity issues, things to know if those laws are causing inequities and that's where they've seen the biggest kind of places where they want to tweak. So, that's just my report from that. So I just thought we could open it up to a conversation about what process do we want for reviewing all the ordinances? And so if anyone wants to chime in.
Sure. I think, I really like the idea of reaching out to the department heads that are, you know, in many cases, either operating under or in these things to just see, you know, where they might have seen some friction. I think that that's, that's something, so maybe, maybe it would make sense for somebody to like write a draft of that that we could approve.
Sure.
Go through.
Any volunteers?
Yeah, I mean, I'll do it if.
Okay, I mean, I'd happy to too, if somebody wanted, yeah. Okay, cool. So there's that, and then, I don't know if you guys, in terms of when we're looking at these ordinances, in terms of looking for structural, for inequities, is there kind of, does anyone have any ideas of maybe a process or questions that we can kind of look at? Like who does, who does this law affect? Sam, do you have any feedback on, or have you thought about this in terms of some kind of rubric? Or?
I, as a rubric, no, but just in kind of the reading that I've done for tonight, the thing that has really struck me, and granted, it's hard not to think this stuff is pretty boring, first couple of chapters. But, you know, the things that I've found have been in, you know, issues with kind of the words on their face. And it's just in a very limited kind of extent. I think that there are going to be some issues as we get into it, kind of in the areas where the rubber hits the road, like in zoning and, and issues like that. I mean, I think a rubric is a good idea, but on the other hand, like I don't want to impose something on the way people are viewing this in the process that works for them. That's just kind of one, especially like, I'm coming from this, from the perspective of someone who, you know, doesn't, doesn't live on kind of the receiving end from day to day. So for me to be sitting there coming up with a rubric is not a good idea, frankly. You know, I think to work with other folks and come up with something might be, be better, but that would just be my, my concern.
Okay.
For general education purposes, can you define what you mean by rubric?
Yeah, and I guess I don't mean a rubric because rubrics are pretty intensive. So I think I, what I was thinking more in my head was like guiding questions, like who does this law affect? You know, who, who would be at the receiving end of this law? Does it affect different people differently? I don't know, like just some kind of guiding questions more, Tom?
I don't know how useful this would be, but, you know, so my background is in economics and political economy and that sort of thing. And one of the big political economy questions that you'll hear people say a lot is, you know, the sort of three questions when you're looking at any sort of government thing, and those questions very broadly are like, who decides who benefits and who pays? And that's not going to work perfectly here, but the, just when I'm looking at anything in the government, that's kind of the questions that I'm sort of asking to get a better idea of like sort of the power structures that are going on here is, you know, like, okay, so who decided that, you know, like, who's calling the shots here? For whose benefit is this set up and like, how is this whole thing? You know, like, what is the cost of doing this sort of thing? I don't know if that's always going to be a perfect fit here, but it's just a concept that's worked very well for me general, so I figured I'd throw it out as, but I think you're right, Lindsay, that really we're, we're sort of looking at like, you know, okay, who's affected by this? How is this, like, like, yeah, I mean, I guess that's the real question, the real first question, right? Who's being affected by this? If any.
Okay.
I think I would add to that too, so who just, who decides who benefits, who pays, but also who is potentially disenfranchised by it? And, and also just keeping an eye on language, which Sam sort of alluded to, but, you know, the wording on it, making sure the wording on its face does not, you know, is not biased, as well as sort of looking, looking under the hood, so to speak, to ask those questions.
So.
I think one, one other thing just occurred to me, and that would be the question, like what is the, what is the purpose of this ordinance? What are, what are, what were the writers trying to do? Because some of, I mean, I think some of the language, or maybe a lot of the language, is dated. I mean, there's stuff in there from 1945, you know, I think. And so, you know, if it's, if it's, it's easier maybe from our perspective, if, you know, we look at the headings where it is in the ordinance, what were they trying to do? And, you know, if we're approaching this now, from our perspectives, how would we achieve the same goal? Which I think probably would be a little bit closer to, you know, to a way in which most of us would probably be more accepting of it. So that's just another, another thought.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, you know, a lot of it looks dated. And some of the, some of the ordinances I read, I was like, what does this even mean? Like I wasn't, and I was like, maybe it's just because I don't get it, like, you know, it's legalese or law. But should it be more accessible? Like, should anybody be able to read the ordinance and understand it? You know, so I think it's easy just to be like, well, I don't understand it because I'm not an attorney, but as citizens, should we be able to read our laws and understand them? Well, I guess, you know, as we move forwards, maybe sometime we'll be doing chapter by chapter, but sometimes we might go out of order if a department head has responded more quickly than another one and wants to come talk to us. So until, so we can kind of be fluid in the way that we progress. Not sure we'll learn as we go and I'll keep calling councillor Thorpe in Northampton and see what's going on with them, reading their agendas. Okay, so I'll move on to the next agenda point, which is, in terms of, we just wanted to put out there that we, a timeline or a process, if we have questions from the police department. Mitch, what is the best way to give you those questions? And, and I think Kay brought this up, so I don't know if you want to say more, Kay, but just a timeline process for getting more information.
Sure, so the, so when PAG was inviting us all to be part of this, the explanation for your presence here was that you are here to feed us data upon request to know, you know, is there a point where this ordinance, you know, has not been enforced for, you know, the last 10 years? So, or is this, how is this ordinance enforced? How many times has it been enforced? Things like that, that we may need to know, that the police department could furnish us with information on. So the question that we had was, how would we ask those questions to you? What would, what would the best point of contact be? And what can we establish an expected turnaround time for those questions? So say we have meetings every two weeks, if we were to ask you a question that came out of this meeting, would we be able to expect an answer before the next meeting, two weeks down the road?
I guess that would depend on what we're asking and what, which ordinance or which piece of information you're looking to acquire. Just, just your brief conversation that you just had, you brought out some really good points. Like some, some of law, some of these ordinances, there's, there's not a, we don't memorize these. They don't, we don't have a knowledge base in our heads to pull from with this information. Sometimes we have to go back and research and determine if an ordinance is being followed, if it's not being followed. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time for us to even understand. Most police have a good basis of knowledge, but like, for example, the, the amount of information that's dated. We've known with laws over the years that some, some laws aren't pertinent anymore. And the questions are of who they affect, how has the times changed? Who are these ordinance now benefiting? Those are all really good, good questions. And do some of these ordinances fit within our timeline? So depending on the complexity of the question, will depending on turnaround timing. I can say I will do the best I can to get, get the answers that we need. And maybe during the course of this, we can, like you guys have contacted John Thorpe from Northampton. I used to be a Northampton police officer, so I know Northampton has a lot of resources, more so than, than a lot of communities, and the oftentimes are willing to share. So we should put together a list of the people, maybe I'm not the only source, but there should be a group of sources we can, we can go to and I can be one of them. So turnaround time will depend on what, what we're trying to achieve.
Tom?
Yeah, so first of all, thanks for doing this. I, I guess one question that I would have is, when we're talking about, for instance, how often something is enforced, I'm just trying to get a sense of what, like what kind of statistical, like I assume whenever you guys write a citation for something, that probably is going into some sort of database, right? There's some sort of record of that.
Yeah.
And probably same with arrests. So if we were to say like, hey, how many people have actually been fined under this ordinance in the last 10 years? Something that you could, that would be like a relatively quick like lookup? Or would you have to be like manually going through logs or something like that?
Well, we have a, we have a system, it's an IMC system. And it's, it's an east coast type of, New England, east coast type of database that a lot of law enforcement agencies use. So I've been in law enforcement a long time, I started back in the mid to late 80s. And we've seen a lot of changes in computer databases and the way information is held, right from physical files all the way up to hard drives and so on. So if, depending on the timeline, if you say within this last one to three years, would it be a lot easier to find than if you said, what about from 10 to 15 to 20 years?
Right, yeah, at some point you're dealing with physical records.
I would probably recommend starting with narrow parameters first. And if, it's like the IRS, they'll give you three years, and if they find something within those three years, then they'll go back farther. But if they don't find anything within those three years, then they assume that everything is where it needs to be. So if that, if that answers your question.
Yeah, sure, I think it generally does. And I guess with this stuff, just for the purposes of just timeline and agenda management, if we ask a question and it ends up being, like you look at it, you're like, oh wow, this is not something that we'll be able to turn around and answer for in, in, in two weeks. I think, I mean, I don't speak for everyone here, but I think that for me, that what would be the most important in that case is that, like, that delay just gets communicated so that we know to focus on other stuff. Like if it's like, hey, it's going to take a couple of weeks for us to look at this, then yeah, okay, fine. We understand that, you know, you guys have a lot of other stuff to do, but that might mean that we'd want to have different items on our agenda. And since we can only talk about stuff that's on our agenda, we just, you know, just sort of having that open line of communication, to me, seems like the most important thing.
Making the most of your time, right? I understand that.
So if we, if we want to just use that as a framework to say, you will respond to us within two weeks and just communicate to us if there's additional time needed for that data, I think that that's reasonable.
Sounds reasonable.
And, you know, with an ideal, with an ideal turnaround time of, you know, two to four weeks.
Okay.
And in terms of department heads, you know, having ordinances that they want to bring to, to the forefront, I think that that doesn't, the police department is, is part of that as well. So if you are aware of ordinances that are out of date, you know, that letter will, the letter will be going to the police department as well, Tom? As a department head.
Sure, yeah. What I'll just do is just write a draft for us to all come and take a look at. I mean, unless somebody else, again, I'm not, I'm not grabbing this process. If somebody else wants to take a lead on that, I'm perfectly happy. But if not, I'll just write like a one-page draft of something for us to discuss at our next meeting with basically. But, but yeah, I think the idea would be for it to go to every department head. I mean, some I think will probably have more to say than others, but there's, there's no harm in just sending it to everybody.
Can I ask one question? If somewhere along the course we find there's maybe not an outdated ordinance, but a lack of an ordinance, is that, that's going to be looked at? Or are we just going to kind of work with what we have?
I mean, our charge is to review the ordinances, but if, I'm sure if we discover like a lack of it, all we're sending back is recommendations, we're not, so we can add it to the recommendations.
Right, I mean, I know that department heads have come to the council before with suggestions for updates or amendments or new recommendations. And I know that Chief Alberti has worked with councillors on, you know, sort of public safety related ordinances and tasks. So obviously that, that line of communication is always open, you know, regardless of this committee. But sure, if we found something, oh wow, maybe there should be something talking about this. I don't see the why there'd be any reason for us to not put that in our report.
Yeah, well, so long as it's germane, right? I mean, I have a lot of ideas about a noise ordinance. You know, but it's, so, yeah, because I think it's, it's, you know, the charge is to review. And I think, you know, we might run into some problems if all of a sudden we're coming up, like proactively with ideas that, some of them may very well be related to what we're doing, but you can open up a big can of worms, I think.
Yeah, I agree, we shouldn't be like looking for ones, but if it just in the conversation, you know, a department head is like, this one, what we really need is this, this doesn't make any sense because of this. And we could always add it to the, but we still, yeah, I don't think we're going out to look to make new ordinances. All right. So should we dive into chapters one and two? I'm so curious as to what people came up with. All right, cool. So I'm just going to let it just open it up, if somebody has, maybe I'm, I don't know how we should do this, just like on the first page, was there anything that, page one, two, that came to people's attention, Tom? Do you have an idea?
Just really broadly speaking, I think that, you know, our mandate here is, we can look at any ordinance. It doesn't have to be a matter of, of, you know, bias or, or anything like that. But, but I will, where this was found, that what I, the sense that I got from these first two chapters is that they really are much more based around sort of the inner workings of government than anything else. There's, it's not that I found nothing here, but there isn't a whole lot here that actually have a ton to do. There's some things, but there's not a ton here that has to do with really like these, the East Hampton citizen or the East Hampton visitors' experience interacting with the city government. So I think it's a little bit different than some of the stuff we'll see going forward. I just want to just make that a sort of, like, do you guys generally agree with that as like a sort of level comment?
Yeah, it's mainly structural, mostly structural.
But, but structural is important, right? I mean, so one of the things that I found that I think should be looked at is, in some of the language that describes the requirements to serve on a city board committee, I can't remember exactly which ones, but the, the language that was used was that it was open to voters and residents. And I would strike voters. I don't know why voters would be necessary. Certainly there's a lot of people who, for whatever reason, can't vote, whose perspectives would be helpful on a city board. So I think if you look at pages two dash six, two dash eight and two dash 17, that's where I was finding that. So. The two dash six was the first one, so I'll just go there to see what it was that I was looking at.
And is there any state requirement that people that serve on city committees be a voter, a registered voter?
Not that I know of.
No, I don't think so.
I see Omar's hands up.
If it is, if it is possible to share the documents so that way in the case in the future, any of the constituent who want to see, they're watching this video, they have something they can view.
I can share it, just a second.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, where it is, I don't want to share the wrong thing from my computer, it could be awkward, just a second. Hold on, I had it open in my other computer, my. Do you have it open on your computer? I have it on my other computer, but I can open it. Do you have it open?
But yeah, my copy is a little marked up, but that's fine. I can share, if, am I a co-host?
All participants can share.
Okay, cool. Okay, oops, that's, that's not what I'm looking for.
Do you need me to share it? Because I have it open too.
I got it. I have to put up the agenda instead. Yeah. So, two dash six. Is that visible for everyone?
Yeah. So the, the very controversial council on aging. So it says, what I'm, what I'm referring to is subsection A, consisting of nine persons appointed by the mayor from the voters and residents of the city. In that, in that instance, it's a little bit more open-ended sounding there than it is under the, I think the next one is the Veterans Council. But I think that all the veterans who are voters and residents, right? So it seems from that language that you have to be both in order to serve. And I don't know, I just, I just think that residents probably is enough, yeah.
Yeah, because there could be any number of reasons why somebody might not be a registered voter, but might still have some really valuable stuff to contribute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree, good. I agree, good.
Yeah.
I have a, mostly, yeah. On um, section one four, on page one, two, is that a typo? Or that just didn't make any sense to me. When an ordinance authorizes any act from being performed, would that be prohibits without the license, or is that the way you would say it? That just, that was one of those things I'm like, I was.
That, that one um, is a tongue twister. I don't think it makes any sense.
Okay, good. I was like, I, it doesn't make sense to me, but it doesn't, yeah, I just read that and I had no idea what I read, so then I kept reading it over and over and still had no idea. So I, I don't know if authorizes, it seems like prohibits would be that instead of that author, when an ordinance prohibits any act from being performed without the license or permission of a certain order, the shall have the right to.
Right, cause if I can do it without a license, then wha- what does that matter that you, like, oh, you're gonna give me a license to mow my lawn? Like, well, I can just mow my lawn.
And you don't authorize things from, that's not like a collocation, those two words. It's usually prohibits from.
None, none of it makes sense from
Okay.
any way that you've completed.
So, uh, this is an example where we don't, aren't charged with fixing things. Cause we could spend a lot of time doing that. We, this is a place where we can say this needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just really wanna, I don't mean to like, I just wanna backtrack a little bit. Um, I was reading the ordinance to be printed, and one of the big things I wanna emphasize is making sure that the copy for the city clerk is updated on the city's website in real time. Because I think a lot, again, we agree, a lot of these ordinances are older before the time of Zoom and all of these wonderful things. So I feel like we need to incorporate that a little more, just so that it's in black and white.
On that topic of one seven, I, I was on the charter review committee and I could, I swear, this same language is in our charter and that we do say in the charter that it has to be up on the city website. So I'm wondering if this entire language might be a little bit redundant.
Okay.
I don't know that for sure. I, 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 I should double check that, but um,
I agree that if it's gonna be in here, it should be, they had an up-to-date version on the website.
Yeah, which is what happens. I mean, we, we always get, like, whenever an ordinance passes, a couple days later, uh, the city council will get a, an up, uh, an email from Barb saying that the, the updated version is, is there.
For the city council or for the residents?
Oh, well, that it's up on the website for everyone.
But if, right, if there's gonna be an ordinance that says it should be printed, then it should include it should be on the website, if that makes sense.
Um, right. I agree. Yeah, it's um, I'm just looking it up here in the, in our charter, section two nine, subsection C, publication. Oh no, that's for publication when we're passing an ordinance. Okay, but so, so yeah, maybe that is a good point, that we should just also speculate or specify that um, that that should be on the website too.
And is this still something that happens? That's a good question too. I mean, I don't know when this was written, but does Barb still like print it out and have an application where people purchase it? Like, is that even a thing? So that might even be outdated.
I kind of hope not, because we change the, like, every few months, we'll, we'll pass a new ordinance. That just seems like a lot of paper.
Yeah, maybe we don't want it printed. Maybe it could be printed upon request. I mean, what is the point of just having a bunch of stacks if people can just get it from the website, you know?
Yeah.
It's just like, I don't think it should be printed in the office. Let's save some trees, because.
Yeah, no, I agree. That makes
But if somebody, for whatever reason, doesn't have internet access, or they wanna print a copy, they can get one upon request. This is just a, sorry.
Sorry, not, sorry, um, not to, not to dwell on, on this, but um, in, in the instance that someone doesn't have um, web access, they're, they're gonna be purchasing, like, how much does it cost to, you, you know, and it just seems like, um, if they don't have access to the web, maybe they have other, um, I don't know, it just seems odd, um, maybe charging them for it. Um, although, you can go to the library and print it out.
The library actually charges.
They charge as well.
Well, I think if a resident doesn't have access to internet, and that might be an economic reason they don't have access, we shouldn't charge them for the ordinances. I mean, I just don't see it being such an issue, like that people are gonna go in there abusing the printing out of ordinances. So let's maybe take any of that out about being charged at all.
Yeah.
It's like, once you think about things a little longer, thank you for bringing that up now. It's like, it's on the website and if people want it printed, they can. Just a punctuation thing. Was there a reason there's a question mark at the end of section one, six?
Probably not.
I'm serious. I'm, I wanted to correct lots of grammar and I didn't.
Yeah, we're gonna be here all day, but. I'm still just gonna note it. I had a couple things. I, I, this is not a, a big thing, but I did notice in a, on, uh, what is this? Two dash one, uh, section two dash one, city offices may close on Saturdays. At this point, our city offices are also closed on Fridays and Sundays.
Yeah, that didn't make any sense to me either.
I don't know what that's all about. Again, I think this, this is probably gonna be not the most riveting of the chapters that we go over.
We're just practicing.
But it is like, if the, if we have this saying that they may close on Saturdays, should we also have something that they may close on Fridays and Sundays? Like, do they, do we, do they need ordinance permission to close the public building? I, I just, um,
Yeah, I had that highlighted as well.
That was one little thing. I had like
Or if there's an international pandemic.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if this is really something that we want to get into, but I thought it was interesting that as written here, uh, there is no term limit on members of the council on aging. They just serve indefinitely, which uh, is unique, and I don't know if that's, how that's actually practiced. Um, but I, I find that, I mean, you know, Lindsay, you're the uh, you're the appointments chair. I just, I, I've, I've never seen that before, that uh, there's, there's just no, the only position I know that was like that was um, the director of the Department of Public Works until we passed our most recent charter amendment, was served an indefinite term, but I just thought that was kind of interesting. I don't know if it's something that anyone really needs to take up.
What is the average term for most committees?
Usually, uh, depending on the committee, somewhere between one and three years.
Maybe we can put something in there that says that we're gonna, you know, depending on review, they can be there for up to three years. How many people are in the council of aging now? If you don't mind me asking, if you even remember, I'm sorry.
Uh, they think they said that there's nine of them in the ordinance. Nine persons appointed by the mayor. But, yeah, I just think that's interesting and I'm curious, um, yeah, it said, sorry. It says that they shall hold office until their successors are designated. But uh, yeah, I just think that that's interesting. I don't, I don't know if it's something that, like, unless somebody else finds this important in some way. I just, it stood out to me as kind of unusual, but I'm, I'm not like, I don't think we need to do anything with it.
Well, I'll do some follow-up in terms of just looking at who's on there now and if they actually have a term limit on their appointment, and if they do, then maybe this needs to be updated. So I'll just check it out. See.
It looks like there's two vacancies on the council on aging right now.
And then it said, what is, but the chairperson shall be designated from time to time. That just sounds so sometimes, I don't know, it sounded very
Very wishy-wash.
I, I see that language in, in, in stuff. I've seen it in state law, I've seen it in the charter. I don't know if that's just like Massachusetts government legalese for whenever the mayor wants to make a change. But I don't, I don't know for sure.
Can I offer out something? Is, is it okay to, to offer something? Um, I've worked in town government in Williamsburg. I held a lot of positions, um, from hiring committees, capital planning, um, the OPM committee. We, we, a lot of times, uh, I, I, I've seen language like that before, um, in town and city governments, because they, they worry sometime about getting volunteers to work these positions. And they, I think they try to frame, they put a framework around so it doesn't sound too intimidating for someone to know that if they sign up for a position, it's gonna only be for this long, or it has to be for this long to stay on. And i- i- are, is that, are they paid positions at council of aging, or just volunteer? Volunteer?
I'm pretty sure they're volunteer. There's nothing in here specifying any salary, and there is for other positions that I know are paid, so I think they're volunteers.
Before you move on, actually, just a small point of just like inclusivity language. Like, I see we use chairperson a lot, but in the title there, it does say chairman. I don't know if that's something that they're, you know, focusing on here, but like, that, since the language carries through in other parts, I would assume we've changed that as well.
Yes. I found a similar thing somewhere.
I have a couple of notes on things like that, actually, um, a few different pages, so.
I don't know. Uh, where, where was it? I, I thought I made a note.
His, her?
Yeah, it was a, um,
There's one on um, section two dash seven, two. Number seven.
Yeah, I found one here and member of his immediate family.
Right, yeah.
I think we could probably just um, suggest just kind of a global
Right.
transition towards gender-neutral language, uh, you know? We probably don't need to, well, I don't know. What do you guys think?
Agreed.
Yeah, I think uh, uh, someone is going through it with a comb and eliminating any of those that were missed.
Omar, I just saw your uh, your co, the, the thing that you threw into the chat. That's interesting. So basically, yeah, just going back to the, the first page.
Yes, look, look like uh, when they uh, put it there, they, they just add what the MGL said.
Okay, do, do you think we need to be doing the same thing for Fridays, since we're now closed on Friday? Like,
I, I don't think so, because if we put it there and then another um, mayor decide to chain hours and open on Friday, I think we shouldn't put it there, just that way, keep it open in case the next mayor or the future mayor decide to uh, split the forty hours of work and through Monday to Friday.
Of course, it says may remain closed, which means it doesn't have to, but.
Right.
There's just a little punctuation, sorry. Section two, seven, two. And this is just, I'm sorry, I'm an English teacher, but B, C, D seems like it should be, well, A doesn't feel like it should be A, and then, cause those three things are sub-points under the A. See what I'm saying? Just for readability, sorry.
I also have a thing with section two dash seven, two, and not expenditure limitations, and my question is this, is, it's saying that um, it does it annually, so once a year. What are the chances that we could change that to maybe twice a year?
So wait, what, we're, what page are we on here?
Section two dash seven, two.
Page two, two. Two, two.
Two, two, okay. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It just feels like, when it comes to money, that it shouldn't be like a once-a-year thing. It should be a little more consistent.
And Natalie, what are, what are you looking at specifically? I'm just having
So I'm actually, after reading uh, section D, it says the total amount spent during a fiscal year shall not exceed the amount authorized by the city council on or before July first of that fiscal year, or any increased amount of that authorization that is later approved during the fiscal year by the city council. So what that tells me is that it looks like it's only being looked at once a year, unless I'm wrong.
I think it's saying that throughout the year, the total amount of spending like can never exceed the amount authorized by the city council. Like, on or before July first, that's when we approve the city's budget for the next, for the, like, for the upcoming year.
Not, I would say that it's when they spend it, does that come before us? So I mean, it's not like we just look at it once a year, it's just that they can't spend more than that within a year time.
And maybe we should just reword it. So, I mean, from when I read it, I thought it was a once-a-year thing, but it doesn't really say or specify uh, more than once a year.
Are these, are these spendings that they would come in front of the city council to get authorized? Or no?
I would assume this is something that you, a- a- again, like, tell me if I'm wrong, but the city council approves things, whatever budget it is, and that's separate. But I'm saying, if you, you've approved the budget, it should be looked at more than once a year, maybe once every quarter, or whatever.
I think, I think this is one of those things where it's like, for whatever reason, um, people need to word things, uh, use more words than are completely necessary. I mean, I, I think it, it's pretty much saying that you can't, no, no department, agency, or, or any of those things at the beginning can
It's pretty much saying that you can't, no, no department, agency or, or any of those things at the beginning can spend more money that, than they're given by the, um, by the city council in a year. Which would include like any further amount of money the city council might authorize after they originally authorize it. So, um, I mean, I, I think it could be worded in a way that, that is more accessible to people. Um, I mean, it took me about fifteen times reading that to figure out what it said. And I think that's just what it says. Don't spend more money than we give you.
Yeah, that's basically, that's, that's how I'm reading it.
Yeah, and B C D, right, should be indented right under A. Just, those are the things that are, because in terms of reading it, that would help. I'm in the weeds.
That's okay. And A should, A shouldn't be in A and the other three points.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you zoom the type in a little bit? I mean, make it a little bit bigger. Oh God, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't necessarily disagree that this is poorly formatted and poorly worded. I guess my, my one, um, thing when we're trying to figure out what we're gonna work on here is that like, for every time that we make a recommendation to the city council, um, and they decide to change something, that then go to the committee and then that had, like for any change to any of these ordinances, it will require a public hearing and that public hearing will, you know, uh, include advertising expenses. And so, like, I'm not, I, I'm not arguing that, that that is, uh, poorly formatted, but, uh, I, I am wondering whether in our report, we want to include, you know, sort of formatting and grammatical stuff where it's not clear that it's going to cause anybody to actually make any different sort of public policy choices.
Do you need to take, do a public hearing to just fix a spelling error or grammar error? It doesn't change the meaning?
That's a, I mean.
Cause for this, I feel like it's just, it's like an, it's a error. Yeah. So. Like, like that question mark that was just there for no reason, like, it doesn't seem like you would need public hearings to like clean up the punctuation and grammar, but.
My understanding is that any change or amendment to the ordinances does require a public hearing.
So that means all wording will be a public hearing?
Yes, I think so. There might be some way around that. I'm just not aware of it.
Do changes have to be reviewed by the city solicitor as well or?
Yes. Um, we were, I think we were talking about some issues with gender, um, related issues that Helen had brought up. And I'm not sure that we finished that conversation. So I don't, Helen, you're, you were mentioning, um, some instances that you found. And I wonder if you could kind of continue.
Yeah, limited pronouns here and there. And then, you know, again, sort of gendered, um, titles. And I think, you know, Tom had mentioned, uh, sort of blanket requests and all of those changes throughout the whole, the whole framework here. But I'm wondering, do those specific changes then, like if there was a list of those? And that was submitted, does that, I imagine that also falls under needing to be reviewed and approved. But if we're not notating those things, like who is going to do that and then submit that to make that happen? I think some good questions are coming up here that I will take and find out some more answers, like in terms of punctuation. Cause I think we could just do a word search, like anytime there's a chairman, he, any kind of gender, we just say we want to change it to they and change it to chairperson and take any gendered language out. And just to ask if, I don't know who to ask, I guess the city solicitor, if we change or the clerk, if we just want to change like a, you know, grammatical problem, what, is that the same process? Like, so these are some questions, we're, we're raising some good questions that I can, you know, add to my homework list.
And I'm, I mean, I would be willing, if we could get approval to do that as a blanket. I would be willing to, to comb through it and find the instances and just notate which section they, they appear in.
I mean, I, maybe one way that could be done, even if we are coming up against a requirement to have a public hearing. If we're talking about sort of global changes, it's possible we could just propose an ordinance amendment for the entire document that just makes all these little formatting and sort of minor wording changes where the, where nothing's being suggested. And then at least, you know, yes, it would have to go to the city solicitor, but presumably it would be a very quick review. And yes, we would to schedule a public hearing, but presumably it would be a pretty pain free public hearing. If you just, if it was all just kind of done at once. So I think that is possible. I, I, I guess my, you know, my other point would just be to, to just be conscious of like, you know, um, just time limitations, but I, but I think that that, that would probably be the way to do it would be a sort of like one big global edit. Where there's not actually any real policy change. That's, that's just one idea that I am currently having.
And Tom, just for the notes, did you mean that to include both the gendered language and possible grammatical errors?
We, we could do different things or just one big global thing, either one. I mean, in, in either case, it's not, it's not substantially changing the way that these ordinances are necessarily being applied. It's just bringing them up to sort of language that's more modern and more easy to understand. So I think you.
More, more inclusive.
And more inclusive, yeah. Um, and, and so I think you, you could get away with doing it as one public here if you wanted to.
But we could, yeah, we'll wait and see, cause that might come under a category with other things that is about inclusivity, whereas one thing is just grammar and really nothing, nothing to do with equity or anything, just bad grammar. So, okay.
In, in the chat, I put up some, um, language that I found, um, with regard to gender. And general neutral pronouns. So it's from Berkeley, California. Don't make fun of me. But it just says, you know, the gender neutral pronoun includes feminine and masculine genders. Um, and then addresses pronoun singularity and it gets into the use of they and them as substitute. Pronouns. So that's a possibility is to, is to look at something like that. Another possibility is that there are some people that don't like to be identified by they or them either. So, um, where someone is giving discretion, instead of saying his or her discretion or their discretion, you can repeat the name of the office or the person that has the discretion.
Like at the chairperson's discretion.
Yeah, or the mayor, or whoever it might be, yeah. So there, I think there are different ways to, to, um, to fix it. Um, I don't really know which one folks would want to choose, but I, I, I think that the, there is an issue just with the, the pronouns in any case and it's, I was glad you guys picked it out.
Other things of note that maybe you discovered in the these two chapters?
I will say the one thing that occurred to me. When we're talking about the, uh, the, the chapter on licenses and permits of delinquent taxpayers, which would be on page two dash eighteen. So sections two dash seven, seven through two dash seven, nine. And this, this may be a larger, a sort of larger issue than just changing a couple of, of bits of language and, um, I, I'm just wondering, I noticed that there didn't seem to be any. I mean, it does mention that there would be a hearing, but it, it doesn't mention any specific option to waive fees for, for unprecedented events, you know, so I'm thinking clearly of the pan- of the pandemic. And it, Tom, Tom and Lindsay and Omar, the city council decided to reduce fees for some licenses, is that correct? And you didn't need to have language in there saying that you could do that. You were, you as the city council was just able to make an exception.
I think the mayor did that too, like the, the, the dump or the different fees in the city, she waived. Yep, she waived those.
Right. And some fees for businesses as well, I think, right?
I believe that that, yes.
Oh wait, if you scroll up, the waiver section would be two point seven, two dash seven, nine, correct? But that's more about business interest rather than, you know, calamity.
Right, um. Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, my, my first read of this, uh, and I, I, I wouldn't necessarily have any problem with recommending that they take a look at this. Uh, but my, my look at this is that, um, the licensing authority may deny, revoke or suspend any license or permit, yada, yada, yada. Then the may to me suggests that they, they have the power to do it, but not that they must. It doesn't say that they shall, right? So if there was a case where a licensing, saying authority felt that, yes, there was some, you know, someone had incurred some sort of horrible hardship and they were unable to pay their taxes this year, but they still wanted for this, uh, they, they still felt like, I don't think that they're, they're in any case forced to deny, revoke or suspend any license or permit. I just think that it, it gives them the power to do so and that the failure to pay the taxes is on its face like cause for doing that, but I mean, uh, that was just my first read on it.
Right. So it's authority, but not a mandate.
I mean, is that what other people took away from that or? No, I.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just wondering if something was, um, revoked or denied, if there's a chance for for the, or someone seeking a license or permit to appeal that decision, like and, and get a second look over it or, you know, I don't know, just like another review of some sort, um, to try again. Depending upon, um, circumstances, you know, if someone was denied for whatever reason. Would they have another opportunity?
Do you think it would be helpful if there were? I'm just sort of brainstorming here. Uh, and this is sort of echoing Kay, what you said, if there were, uh, something in, in seven, nine, authorizing the mayor to waive such denials in the cases where.
Extraordinary circumstances?
Yes, something like that. That's just, yeah, I mean, I, I kind of think that, that might be something that the council could look at, yeah.
And that would fall under two, two dash seven, nine, under the waiver section?
That's, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Tom, can you scroll up to, uh, two, seven, seven?
That one was a doozy, I felt like.
Being two paragraphs.
So would there need to be a language to, um, to allow for a party to appeal to the mayor specifically on the grounds of extraordinary circumstances or hardship?
That's a good question. I mean, I don't see why anyone, anyone has the right to just contact the mayor. I don't know, like, I mean, you might want to introduce some sort of formal process, but I don't know. There's a, the hearing is provided for in two, seven, seven, if there's a denial. It's, it's hard to read, cause it's kind of late in the day and there's, looks like there's about a million words in about three inches of space. But I saw the word hearing, which is a good sign. And so I, and, and really, I mean, I think there's a, a sentence that might be the longest sentence in, in the world ever. Like, it ends right here and I think it starts with the licensing authority. Which is. So yeah, maybe, maybe, um, chop that up a little bit, but, um, so if there's a hearing, that there's some process that's afforded to someone, um, who's been denied. And I, and I think, although I don't know, um, cause I didn't really pay that much attention to this, is that the waiver is perhaps a waiver given by the, um, by the mayor, um, after, uh, someone has been, something's been revoked after a hearing. No, but I think, I mean, I, you know, in looking at, at this stuff and, I mean, this is, and I, I think maybe it's just a general, kind of a general recommendation, because we would spend forever looking at, um, punctuation and spelling and word choice and the rest of it. But I think, you know, when we're, we're trying to make changes in ordinances so that, um, everybody in East Hampton is better served. That these things being written in a way that everybody could understand what they say. You know, that it's written in more of a plain language, um, would be really helpful. I mean, I think a lot of lawyers get paid big bucks because they're trained to read this junk. And if it was just written the way that normal people talk, you know, I think that would be helpful to a lot of people.
to a lot of people, but um, I don't know, that's just a, that's just kind of more of a editorializing or whatever, but um, it falls in here somewhere, I think.
I think it falls under accessibility.
Right, absolutely. I think one of the things, when we invite the different department heads, like if we have someone come from who would be the licensing permitting people, then we can ask questions of different groups. Even, um, I'm wondering if we also want to include the, the committee chairs in our kind of broad correspondence and just have them check the ordinance related to their committee and does it make sense with what they, what they're doing and does it? So. I mean, it'd be interesting to see if people who work in this area understand what it says, the licensing and permitting people, and they, they would be more, um, you know, they would be better people to re, reword it, since they probably know what it's supposed to say. Uh, I see Natalie asked, can we add incentives for BIPOC businesses? I don't know, I don't know if that's something that happens in the ordinances, um, city laws, I, I don't know, does anyone else wanna? Address that question? What were you thinking about that?
I'm more than happy to reach out to Nicole if need be to ask about it, but I feel like that's, you know, just, one, for disadvantaged people to have these fees waived is crucial. That wording ass- absolutely has to be out there, giving incentives, BIPOC businesses is crucial for simple growth.
Right, and if we offered incentives to start even like waiving a permit fee or that, it's just like elevating BIPOC businesses, so, yeah.
My one thing is, this isn't really about like, um, or my read of this at least, isn't so much about like, I mean, I think that the city has the power to waive permitting fees and things like that, I, I wanted, that's a thing to double check on. This is more about like, if you have a permit to, say you have a liquor license and then you don't pay your property taxes for a couple of years. This is just giving the city the authority to revoke your liquor license if you're not paying your taxes. And I, I, I do, I would be interested in, in chatting with some of the licensing people to see how in practice this process actually applies, if they automatically drop that hammer whenever they, um, whenever there's someone delinquent, or if they're working with people and this is just a, a sort of a leverage that they, they have. But uh, you know, when I think about like incentives for businesses, you know, that you, yeah, maybe, maybe you would look at, at certain people and see for a reason of economic empowerment that you wouldn't want to charge for a certain fee. But I, I, I think that there'd be a lot of folks in city government who would be pretty nervous about the idea of giving up the ability to revoke licenses for non-payment, which is what this section by my reading covers.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I would just add to that, that um, discretion is always a double edged sword. I'm sure that they gave themselves discretion by adding may here, because there are different, you know, there are different situations that come up, and there, maybe there are different reasons for why people couldn't pay taxes and that sort of thing. But as, but it also invites people to make decisions that, you know, have, and, and in different results. So are they more apt to exercise their discretion in favor of someone who looks like this? Or are they more apt to um, use their discretion for someone, you know, they know, or, you know? So, I mean, I just kind of flag that as something um, that exists, um, like, what is the, what is, when, when you are exercising discretion to allow a delinquent taxpayer to continue um, to hold their permit? You know, what does that, what does that look like in practice? And is that an area where, um, you know, uh, like, that could be a place where like structural race, racism resides, right? And so, and I don't know if that's the case, or if this is just an academic point, but, you know, it, it strikes me that in racism is kind of sneaky, right? I mean, nowhere in here are we gonna find something that says these people can't do this, or, or, you know, things like that, and, and that, you know, it's more about the application of the law and what that looks like, um, where it kind of peeks out from behind the pages, so, I mean, I'm glad, I, I'm, I'm glad that we're looking at areas where discretion is given to people, um, because I think that that's kind of where you're gonna see kind of, or not, um, but there's an oper- there's a chance that things could occur in those places, um, so.
Well, perhaps to see to that then, there's been, you know, if someone, again, along the lines of just being able to appeal something or bring it to the mayor's attention, having that um, section somewhat resembling, I don't know if it's the same thing, if that severability clause, where it's just like if any of these sections of this ordinance um, is invalid or unlawful or unenforceable, whatever, but where someone could just, if the language is in there to say, if you feel as though you are being discriminated against for, you know, race, sexuality, whatever, all of those, that, that list, you know, putting that language in there that just allows a citizen who's reading this and saying, am I unjustly being targeted and made to pay the, you know, the fee or being denied this license, whereas I'm seeing that person who might be a buddy of someone who issuing, you know, or, or denying these licenses, um, where we, we have discretion, but imagine. If the language is in there, it's just a cushion for people that might feel targeted.
Would it be helpful to maybe request that some folks, I mean, there's a number of different licenses and permits that exist in East Hampton, but I guess, you know, uh, y- y- you, we could probably narrow it down to a handful of people who, who actually do this sort of thing. Would it be helpful to, to, to actually chat about what this looks like in practice?
Should we, yeah, I could invite one of them to a, you know, to our next meeting, maybe, or whenever they're available. Because I think, like, I think basically, I don't know how you felt, but after I read this, I was more confused. It seems like we're doing a close read of the ordinances, and if we leave feeling like more confused than before, that's not a good sign, and it is an accessibility issue. This, like you said, the sentence is a lie, I don't even know what's going on, so it would be nice to understand the practice of licenses and permitting, and so, if you want, I can put an invite.
Yeah, I think data would be good.
Is there a tax collector, um, this little person in this, there's also the or, we don't know who the, the like, who's furnishing all these licenses, right? So, just have to do a little digging into that.
I think, um, Lindsay Mailer might be a good place to start, she's the licensing clerk, for at least the liquor license, and I think more broadly, she's sort of serving as the licensing clerk, so that might be a, a good jumping off point.
Okay. So we'd like to collect data about yeah, about how many licenses they give out, if they're gonna ever vote, and basically what the process is, like, what like, uh, so we can actually see this and understand what this looks like in our city. Okay.
I can't wait to get to zoning. My eyes are glazed over.
I've got some terrible.
Um, it definitely feels like an invitation should be to someone with knowledge in that area when we're discussing that area, because I feel like there's a lot of, we kind of put questions out there that none of us have the answer to, and if there was someone else present at our meeting that was an expert in the area we were discussing, would be more productive.
Should we include an invitation in the letter for people to speak about anything that they've identified as an issue and then ask them to be willing to, you know, ask them to be willing to share, um, in future meetings if we have an issue that's near and dear to them?
Yeah, right. I know department heads have been attending the Northampton, um, ordinance review committee meeting, and that sounds like a and even if it's, like, in, in a, you know, whatever, whatever, before we go on to chapter three next time, I think we might start going in different orders, depending on who gets, which department head gets back to us more, you know, quickly, and then we might just skip around, um, since we just got started, obviously, chapter one and two made most sense. But chapter three, oh, there it was, bicycles, trails.
You just want to mention too, in, in, in the naming of municipal buildings, facilities and public places in two dash eight one, it references that the city has a naming policy and set of procedures. I, you know, I feel like, given, um, given New England's, or the, the country's tendency to name things after, um, racist Confederate generals, you know? I wonder if we, would it be appropriate for us to get ahold of that particular policy and procedure to see if anything needs to be referenced to making sure that the naming conventions are equitable and, and not facilitating systemic racism and tropes?
Is there, I, I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was a policy beyond what is laid out in ordinance.
It is that, okay.
This is the policy, yeah, which I thought this was cool, because I never read this before, so I thought, oh, we could, that'd be a nice campaign, people start naming some new things in East Hampton.
I think we did it once, Omar, you were on a naming committee last term, right?
Yes, um, for the, for the park, two of them, I think I was part of, uh, when we named two fields, and then we named, um, the side, the walk to the field still, to the police, um, Campbell, uh, the police Campbell. I think that was a year ago when he died tragically, um, but yes, and, and he's a pro for it. They create a committee, the committee, um, evaluate the name, and the committee then send a recommendation to the full city council, and then the full city council have to approve it.
And, but there's not anything specific to, I mean, that's, that's a little bit relying on, well, I mean, hopefully we have people that are aware of of naming conventions that are not gonna, that are not gonna be racist. But there isn't any specific language about about that, it's really, anybody can step to have something named, and then the city council is up, it's, it's up to the city council and that committee to that panel to review it and consider whether it's appropriate or not appropriate.
Right, it doesn't really have any guidelines, it's just sort of establishing the procedure. I guess you could, you could put in some sort of guidelines about disqualifying naming things after people who had done certain kinds of stuff or something.
Is there any kind of public forum to discuss the naming, or is it just?
It does say hear public testimony when the panel is, is convened. Um, but it says to hear public testimony and including holding a public hearing if appropriate.
I, I think requiring a public hearing is probably better. You know what, I don't, I don't, I mean, it's kind of one of those things where you, you, it probably would never happen, where someone sneaks in some crazy name, right? Right, I'm just, I'm just, but, you know, if, if, if it's open to the public, the chances of that happening are slim to none, and that, you know, I think, you're, to your point, okay, um, you know, so long as, well, it's hard though, too, because people don't, people don't participate in public meetings as much as they should. But I would just say at a minimum, it should be, a, a hearing should be required, instead of just suggesting if it's appropriate.
Omar, you were on a committee, do you have any comments about this?
I, I think I agree with the, uh, requesting a public hearing, um, because, you know, most of, um, of those meetings is usually the people who go there is in favor of, of the, of the name they, they put forward. But if they open it to the public hearing in front of the city council and someone is against it, because someone knows something about that particular person, I think there is a great idea to have a public hearing, um, instead of just listening to the chairperson of that committee just giving the report. I think it's good to get the report, but at the same time, when the full city council is gonna vote for it, have a public hearing, I, I think it's a good idea.
I, I'd like to believe that, one, considering we have three city councillors on this wonderful committee, um, that racist names and, I'd like to believe all of that stuff, that you guys aren't gonna let it slide. But public hearings give the opportunity for the public to either educate, uh, the city council or other public speakers, and then allow everyone to kind of have the voices heard, and then, uh, city councils.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, uh, recommending that they require a public, I mean, really, it would just be striking the words if appropriate.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely.
I had some thoughts about, uh, our committees and our commissions and everything, um, in terms of getting more representation on our city committees. But I don't, I'm trying to in my mind, think about how that would translate to the ordinance, I mean, it's, it's obvious in hiring practices, right, where you post your positions. But, so I, in, I would love to increase representation on our committees, um, from diverse people, ages, you know, people with different abilities, everything. We, we seem to have the same people that kind of cycle through the committees, which is great, they're volunteers for the city. Uh, but I, so I would love to have a way to encourage kind of outreach and recruitment of more diverse recruitment of more diverse representation, but I don't know what that would look like in, in East Hampton. So if you have any thoughts about that, or if you think that's something that we should consider. It was just more of a something I've been thinking about anyways.
We do something a couple of years back, not that this would be in the ordinances, but we did something a couple of years back where I thought they did like a, I don't know how, it, how well it ended up being advertised or received, I, I had a conflict, but it was like a civic fair where they were sort of going over different committees and what they did for, you know, and trying to see if people would be interested. I think that was like
I did that during my campaign, actually, um, and, and a part of the appointment committee now, we are going to work with East Hampton media to come up with ways to articulate what the committees do and encourage people, so that when our openings, we can have like a a video asset we can share out, you know, encourage people. So, you know, I mean, it's, we're always happy for people to step forward and volunteer, right, and a lot of these where they're not filled. So, you know, I was thinking about whether it's posting in different languages or and we don't, it's not, we are a small town, so it's not like we have this many different media points, you know, different newspapers within our city to advertise to make sure. So that was just something I've been thinking about, but I don't, I don't have the answer to it.
Ly- Lindsay, what's the, um, what does it look like when someone gets on a committee, not from a, not maybe from a, let's read what the rule is perspective, but just how do people end up on a committee? Does the mayor go looking for folks that, um, she thinks would do a good job? How, how, how does that work? What does that look like? Or what are the different ways that it looks?
Well, anyone else can chime in, but, um, usually people go onto the website or they see that there's an opening and they send a letter of interest and application to the mayor. She doesn't usually vet people, um, more than that they're a resident and they're willing to serve. Uh, and then she sends it to the, um, the city council, and then we're supposed to do a little more vetting. And in most cases, you know, they get onto the committee. What happens is, but you, that's a very good question, because you're a resident here, you're involved and you weren't sure, so that, that, this isn't like an ordinance thing, I think it's more like PR and communication from the city in terms of knowing that you don't need a special skill to join a committee, you need to be a resident and interested and wanna get involved. And I think there's some people who see themselves as leaders that are naturally, uh, tend to get involved. And they have, you know, self-confidence, efficacy, they put themselves forward, and there's a lot of other people who would be really valuable to committees, their perspective and their, their experience would be um, benefit to the city and the committee, but don't see themselves in that role or don't realize that there's not big barriers to getting on committees, there's not big barriers, so.
Once the, um, once the mayor passes along, um, the name, what, what, what further vetting is there? Impplied that there was, um, some more vetting, and people usually, it usually goes through. So what's the, what's the rest of the vetting, and if it usually goes through, when it doesn't go through, why, why would that be the case?
Well, this is something we're, we're looking at to have a process that's more transparent to the community. Very, I mean, in the short time I've been there, people that haven't gone through are people who have maybe a very strong social media presence that is negative or counterproductive to community building. I know someone was kept off the committee for their social media posts. Or there was, uh, somebody who wrote a opinion letter to the Gazette that was published right before their appointment and what they communicated in their op-ed was seen contrary to the work that they would do on that committee, so. It's you, it's very rare and it's usually been, um, but it's usually that. I mean, I'm, I'm newer, so Omar and Tom want to add, but it's usually someone, it's not like your skill level or anything like that, it's usually that someone's been very outspoken in a way that's been negative and counterproductive, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the only cases I've seen where people have been voted down, or where it's really even been like a tough vote, has been for one particular high visibility that being the CRC, um, where there are which, you know, but the CRC, the whole thing is, is laid out in this ordinance, but, you know, there's been questions in the past at various points on the political spectrum about whether somebody who made certain statements about certain other types of people in the community would be able to sort of work in, in, in that role successfully. I think the only other cases that I've heard of people not getting in were there were, there have been before my time cases where there was like a, uh, there was a, there, there were people working, uh, like not like volunteer committee members, like people, uh, like city employees who had like very, very contentious relationships with the city council. And, uh, they went up for reappointment and the council denied their reappointment based on the, sort of the way that that relationship had been going. Uh, you know, based on somebody like not responding to requests to appear, uh, and, and stuff like that. But, you know, because this, this same appointment process is basically followed for everything from like the police and fire chief down to like members of strictly advisory unpaid voluntary committees that don't even meet on a super regular schedule. Uh, and so obviously, like, that level of scrutiny kind of varies depending on like how serious the responsibilities that are associated are, if that makes any sense.
So, as somebody who's applied to a couple of different committees, one of the committees, the CRC, is one of the ones that I applied to, and I went directly to the mayor, I'm just saying Sam, and on what I've experienced, but I didn't hear anything, and I got a letter back basically stating that, thank you for trying, we found somebody else. However, with this committee, I was told to forward my information to Peg, who is the head of the city council, and and then she did her, I'm assuming either vetting or whatever, at that point, uh, me and Peg already, all of us pretty much knew each other at this point. So I think it depends mainly on one who's getting the information. But, you know, inclusiveness sounds great, but if, in reality, if people don't know about it, example, um, an issue with an op-ed on, you know, the Hampshire Gazette ended up abfiring. Now, if no one had spoken about it at public speak, no one probably would have even noticed it. So this is just a few different things, I think when it comes to, um, making people want to be a part of this, people need to know. If no one knows about it, no one's gonna be a part of it. And, um, I think there's good anted with our current, like how we're dealing with committees. I think that, you know, unfortunately, you can email, um, someone in city government and they may not get your email, and what ends up happening is, you know, you get lost amongst other applicants or whatever that may be, but.
This is something we're taking up now in the appointments committee, kind of exploring the process, so that's probably if you're, you know, people can attend those meetings and, um, I don't know if that's for this committee, but that's, your experience would be valuable to hear as we kind of work towards, work towards reducing barriers and creating a transparent and consistent process for people coming through.
I'm just trying to learn more about this, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, Council Gomez, have you, have, have you, what's your opinion on? I just think it's so important for people to serve, um, you know, the city government and for those people that are serving it and volunteering, that there's a, a, a diversity of, of views and backgrounds. And has, what's your experience been with, with this, the system of you know, of, of appointments to different committees and boards?
How was my experience with the appointment?
Or view, or views, you know, your opinions of because I think it does matter, I mean, where we, where we read that, um, where we read that bit about, um, you know, it's, it's, um, limited to voters. Or even where, um, so I think it, it doesn't matter, it matters to me, so it, I, I think it's interesting to, to not knowing, because I'm here and you guys see this stuff a lot more. Just hearing from you guys what, what you think about it is, is helpful.
Tom, you wanna say something for?
All I wanted to say is that we should just make sure to stick to stuff that is in the section that's on our agenda. A lot of the stuff about this, um, about our appointments process is, is outlined in, in our charter and not in so, I mean, I think there's a lot of really important conversations, but just in keeping with open meeting law, like, I just, let's try and make sure that we we're sticking to the topics that are on our agenda.
And if you are interested in that topic, I would, if you are interested in that topic, I would encourage you to attend to the appointment committee meeting because that's what we are discussing in that committee currently, it's on our agenda.
Awesome.
Do you feel like we've done enough for tonight, or is there anything else in this section you wanna say before we kind of move on? I'm looking at the, um, kind of the to-do list, just to go, um, back, Tom, you're gonna draft the letter to the department heads. Do you think that letter could also be used for the committee chairs to look at their committee section in here? Just anything, or do you think that's not necessary?
For the committee, um, for the committees that are laid out in the ordinance, because not all of them are.
Right, the ones that are laid out.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure we could, although that does lead us back to the weird little loophole of, we don't know how to contact a bunch of these people, which is something we're dealing with in rules, um, but yes, uh, yeah.
I have a spreadsheet with most of their contact information, so if you draft it, I'll be able to send it, yeah. So, and then I was just gonna look into the council on aging term limits, just for interest. And talk to the mayor and find out, or to Lindsay in the mayor's office and find out about the licensing and fees, who's the person who's most responsible for that, and if they could either share data with us, I would probably just reach out, um, give them a call and see if they be interested in coming to our meeting, or if they could share some data with us. Was there any other, um, homework that we needed to do? Okay, we need to read more, this is like school. I guess chapters three and four, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Wasn't sure if there was buildings and building regulations, chapter three. Okay, so we'll be reading about buildings and bicycles.
Can we, should we ask the, um, the officer about, um, in the enforcement, I mean, we've, we're kind of coming upon those ordinances where there's actually kind of enforcement as far as bike, bike stuff goes. So I don't know if this is something that we wanna ask, um, the police for, you know, any information regarding enforcement of, of those things in advance, or if that matters.
Would, would you like me to answer that question?
Yeah, sure.
When, when it comes to bicycles, there's ordinances, um, but there's no actual enforcement on that.
Okay.
So, we, we don't, we don't typically, uh,
Right.
any bicycle laws.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. That was quick, quick turn, quick turnaround. Okay, so if I'll, if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn. Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. Alrighty, um, I'll, in favor, I can see all your hands, so I will say Natalie, you wanna adjourn? Helen? Kay? Sam? Matt, uh, Tom, you don't get to vote, you have to stay all night, Omar? And Natalie? All right, thank you, this is really nice, um, nice group and I'm learning a lot.
It's nice to meet you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye.